In the back hill. So we'll move over and we'll discuss nuisance ordinance discussion. Um Kenny here. Darwin. If everyone wants to start, Mr. Robertson. We've done a lot of the work on this. Some. Melanie's being looked, it sounds like you've been giving her a lot of the work to do. A lot of job security work on this, Melanie.
It was a team effort.
There you go. She saved me.
Yeah.
It's her job.
It's her job to save me.
Alright.
I I know know how you wanna start, but I.
So I would I would start out with what Bill said alright for guidance and all this like.
So I amended our nuisance ordinance number one sixteen to have like the new process that we're gonna have possibly adopt eventually with the um code enforcement handbook. And I basically quaterized that from the city of Bend. Uh there were some things that we changed a little bit. But they adopt the inter ICPM, what is that, international code management procedures?
Yep.
IPMC. So I ordered a few of those and I'm hoping you guys will adopt that. So that's just like an international code enforcement handbook for the person to look at and utilize. So it's unbiased. Um a big change that is in the nuisance ordinance is that it takes away any kind of input from the commissioners and it puts it all into the court. And so one thing for you guys to discuss is the citations. Um if you guys don't adopt any kind of citation schedule, it's automatically a class A misdemeanor, I believe. And so that's a four hundred and forty dollar fee, which I don't think is terrible. Like they can set up a payment fee with the court for their citation if needed. Um but the judge and the nuisance code enforcement person will like I hope work together to formulate abatement costs to to the landowner. So that's not included. I got that comment from someone, how much is, how much are we gonna charge? It depends on the nuisance, the type of nuisance um wanting to be cleaned up. There is a nine percent rate for interest. So you know, we could work with that. But they have to pay for that payment plan. And then um. I'm just.
The goal, the goal is uh voluntary compliance.
Right.
And so that's the main goal that we want. Um I did send a letter to Jim Bailey that he hasn't responded to yet. The question I had was so we send them the citation, or first we send them the letter to try to get voluntary compliance. Send them the citation.
Second letter.
Uh there's two letters.
Two.
Yeah, two.
So there's like a hey, you need to, you need to do this and like, or contact us within ten days.
Ten day.
Um and then if they don't respond, then we're like, hey, you didn't respond, you have ten days, then you're gonna get another, you're gonna get the citation.
Yeah.
So and then it goes to collections and then possibly.
So what what I was, what I was wanting is the collections part of it because that isn't part of.
That's new.
So I asked Jim Bailey if can we send them to collections along with the lien? Um cuz we'd rather get paid, put a lien on a place, right? And so that's the question that hasn't been answered yet.
And then in the meantime, I wrote in the ordinance that if a collections agency can't work something out with them within ninety days and start that plan with them, then it will go into the lien process. So and I haven't sent that to Mr. Bailey, or maybe I did, I don't know, I'll make sure if he sends that too. Make sure that's.
Is that working out to be a three month deal? You know, or can it, can it be sooner?
I don't know, like I just said, like if the collections agency can't establish something within ninety days, three months, then they'll just, well, it'll be on their credit record, but then we'll start the lien process and put that on the, on there if it's uncollectible.
But when can we start the actual abatement? So like if it goes to court and how is that process gonna work? Where, is the judge gonna tell us?
Probably after the court.
The county can go in there, clean it up at the expense of the landowner.
Okay. And that, I I mean, that makes sense if it goes in ninety days, if it goes, you know, through two letters on the citation. Makes sense. Seems like a lot of time.
Well, I know there's certain laws that we gotta abide by before we can send them the citation, but this completely takes the commissioners out of it or anybody else. I mean, it goes straight to the court. Court decides and then so.
Yeah, the code enforcement person is very, very busy and very active with. Uh cuz as far as the building side of it, you know, we're still gonna be involved in with it.
Yeah, because they are a code enforcement person, you know, and you can, you can work with Darwin or however we set this up. So if you have a code violation, then you can send them off for that too, so.
I guess I would, for the record, I'd be in favor of class A violation. If you look at the sheets, the there are loose sheets and it says Oregon violations and fines. Uh my experience here is my previous job in watching uh air quality and what Clinton County did. They gave warnings for people that were burning on red days. And then they got a second warning. Then they got a ticket. And the ticket was more than what's written here for class A. It was in the five hundred dollar range. And boy, that got people's attention. And so I just feel that if you slip down to B, C, or D, you don't have their attention. Know what I mean?
And it's gotta be painful.
It's gotta, it's gotta hurt a little bit.
We want them to clean up their property.
And we're, and again, like you say, we're asking for compliance. But when compliance is no longer one of their options, you know, of the person we're asking to comply, then we, we resort to the fine system. And I would be in favor of class A, well, state.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we've gotta build up some funding for cleanup, so these fines would really help with that, with the abatement. And then like legally, if we have like a subjective scale, that's gonna be a mess in the court system, so if it just like cut in your eye, it's gonna make it easier for that whole process, but it's up to you guys. You guys don't have to adopt anything if you just, if you're okay with class A. But if you guys want a different kind of fines, citation schedule, then we'll do that.
Alright.
So.
I'm so good with this.
So can I bring up um for, for nuisances, this um certainly is, is the way to go and it makes sense. I will, I will just tell you that for land use violations, I've used a different section of ORS for fines and violations than maximum fines, minimum fines. Um and I would just pull up my latest, you know, stop use order. Stop work order, but stop use order, that is how I work mine and for, the request for voluntary correction. And I'm using ORS um two oh three point zero six five, um one fifty three point.
Say, say that number again.
Yeah, two oh three, and I'll get you a copy of these in, in the actual letter for you. Two oh three point zero six five and then um ORS one fifty three point zero one eight, point zero one nine and point zero two one. And then lastly, ORS one sixty one point five oh five. And the minimum fine I tell people from this civil penalty is a two hundred and twenty dollar per day of the land use violation. And so this, this has always been, you know, a struggle for me, wondering how that would actually work its way through the courts as you're on ongoing court process. You know, from the day one I find out about either our own investigation or on a complaint being filed, that's the day of first offense. And I've, I've put pretty, you know, threatening or, you know, cautionary word, you know, language into people saying, hey, I know this was the first day, here's the second, on a second level, that's usually what it said. Right now, you're looking at a minimum fee of such and such amount, which is usually in almost every case exceeds the land value of the property. Um you know, if you're talking about a Christmas Valley law that is sold for less than five thousand bucks, these fines only takes, you know, a few days and you're already at exceeding the land value. So, you know, leaning to property, you know, these people may just say, well, eventually walk away or, or get evicted from the property that much you own. Um so it's, it's very interesting how this will work out. I just wanna bring up the fact that we, I do have a different fee schedule that we're working off of, um that we need to be aware of.
So do you find that effective?
Uh, no, none of this is that effective. We've never taken anybody through the court, so it's not all that effective.
Yeah, we, we. However, it before or prior, it was brought before the commissioner.
Yeah.
And commissioners decided that they deserve another chance or and, and nothing was ever done. This way, it goes before the court and it's, takes it out of our hands.
Because I shouldn't say it's not effective, I just have not been able to, this is why this position is so important because I have not been able to have the time necessary to get rid of all the land use violations that are out there. Um and we've talked a lot about needing to update our ordinance to make sure that we specifically word for word spell it out. What is a land use violation when it comes to things such as camping on your own property? When is it camping, when is it actually living, not on land? Um in a permanent, ongoing basis. So, you know, we just need to get more specific and then just, you know, decide on, do we wanna use this fee schedule independent of this other one? And if so, then we just need to make sure that, that we know that the route and the courts understand that the reasons to the these guys are bringing it to them.
You know, you know, the building side, we have a similar one, this investigation fee, it's like eighty bucks an hour. And it can be perpetrated. And, and you, you know, when I've used it, you know, it's gonna have discretion if you're, if you're willing to comply and come in, then yeah, it didn't end up being, you know, amongst investigation.
Right.
Eighty dollars, bigger, eighty dollars, let's go on. That, that is, that has worked in the past.
I like the per day thing because that puts a lot more pressure on.
Yeah, and it definitely has worked in some cases, I shouldn't say.
So I guess, say we did the class A violation, let's just say we did that. And the court finds them guilty, it's gonna be a lot harder to put a lien on. They're, they're never gonna pay a lien for four hundred and forty bucks. And then can we go around and cite them again and again and again? I don't know how that.
My question there, that brought up my question too, uh because really one of the things, getting back to that air quality issue of cloud, second fine is coming too.
Yeah.
And that, you know, it may have doubled, I don't know, I don't know the exacts, you know, but yeah. Yeah, that hit people's pocketbook and they started complying, whether they liked it or not.
Yeah.
Darwin does.
That was part of it, I, I see. Yeah, you know, they were predicted. You were a user. An user that, you know.
When you read that one.
You expected certified woodstoves and so on and so forth.
This is, this is the language I have.
EQ call. Right, we, we, you all have.
Niggle.
So my question, my question to this group is, when, you know, we, we've issued a class A violation, let's say, like Mark says, when does the next one come and is it still the same amount?
Wow.
So I.
What does state law say?
So like we would go through the process. We, and then we would close the file on that process once it's debated. And then you guys could discern, like decide if there's like a second offender, like if we clean this up, send all of this money cleaned up, and then they reoffend on that same property with the same person. I think that's a good point, but maybe I don't know, legally though, for nuisance, that's like the fine schedule for nuisance. Um you guys can impose Darwin's fees through court where you're on, like the per day thing, but I don't know if we can go against the ORS for this. Um.
But that, this is an ORS that power to go read right here.
For, yeah, but that's not the ORS for nuisance.
Yeah, it's, it's.
For.
That's what's interesting, I'll just read you this. So we have a specific land use enforcement ordinance. Uh it's not, it's not the same as the nuisance ordinance, it's a, it's a different one. So I quote that and say, um the Lake County Land Use Enforcement Ordinance has been adopted by Lake County to provide the maximum enforcement authority and procedures to bring property owners into compliance and court a person violating any provision shall be subject to the penalty provisions of ORS on chapter two oh three describing the violation, describe the violation of county ordinance. The district attorney or county council shall have the authority for, for prosecution of such violations. And then two oh three zero six five penalty remedies enforcement status of nuisance declared by ordinance. Uh disposition of fines states. One, subject to ORS one fifty three one zero two five violation of an ordinance about by the county. Company body under two oh three point zero three zero two um zero seven five is a class A violation. And then, and then it goes on to quote what that is. Um fines recovered shall be paid to the clerk of the court for which recovery has had. I'm just giving over a little bit of stuff here, but um when it goes down to maximum fines, ORS one fifty three point zero one eight maximum fines penalty for committing violation is a fine to accept as otherwise provided by law, the maximum fine for violation committed by an individual is two thousand for class A violation. Um minimum fine is that two oh, um two hundred and twenty and then um.
Maximum's two thousand.
Yeah, maximum's two thousand.
Per day?
Yeah, and so um the offense described, an offense is, is conduct for which a fine is provided by any law of this state or by any law or ordinance of a political subdivision of the state. An offense is either a crime described by this, uh or a violation described by ORS. So, yeah, and then my, my letter says, Lake County informs you that you may become liable for uh to pay a civil penalty of at least two hundred and twenty per day from the date of first known violation. However, the penalty could be as much as two thousand per day. And that's why I say, it would be interesting to see how this works through the courts. But that's.
Yeah, cuz the, the state also has their own matrix of buildings IQ and it's, it's a, it's right up there. Meanwhile, I mean, it's, it would be kind of inconceivable.
Yeah, I guess I would be in favor of not uh getting away from what the state is, is asking, I need to see it, but.
So.
I have a question, so like if we do it per day and their court date is set four months out, that means they're possibly paying those fees based on the court schedule for four months, so, too.
And, and they're getting, they're getting warned of that.
Yeah, they're under your budget.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Clean up the property and you won't have.
Yeah, but they're getting warned of that early on and there's documentation, so court would have to side with us saying you were.
They made, the court made this.
Certified letter, you received it, you signed for it, you should understand that.
I just wanted to discuss that, like sometimes, especially with coronavirus, it's still backed up.
No, that definitely needs to be disclosed and then the judge can, you know, uh side with appropriate.
Yeah, what's up.
So, so on your ORS one five three point two zeros, point two zero, point oh two zero, that's for presumptive fines for high warning works up.
That's just the, yeah, that's just like the fee schedule for the citations. It's a class A, it's four hundred. And I can research that further, make sure we're.
It says.
That's just some fun facts, it's not exactly, that's not something we're.
Yeah. And it says, except as provided in that ORS, the presumptive fines for violations are.
Yeah, that information I gave you isn't part of the nuisance ordinance, it's just some fun facts that I found for you guys that I thought might be helpful.
And one of the things that it does say under here on violations and fines, it says the presumptive fines for the specific fine violations are or is, and then it, it gives A and B. B says an amount equal to the greater of twenty percent of the maximum fine prescribed for the violation or the minimum fine prescribed by the statute for the, by the statute of violation. So you could technically go twenty percent above that. And, and actually it says greater of twenty percent of the maximum, so you can go above that. What if we just said for every additional offense, twenty percent, you're, you're, the fee is going to increase twenty percent. And we're still within the statute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So instead of four hundred and forty dollars, you're getting, what is that, five hundred and twenty? Five, twenty eight?
So yes.
Alright.
I don't. I didn't hear what you said.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too.
Yeah, so for each additional, and that, I, it doesn't quite address the thing per day, but uh it at least addresses the for each additional offense. Per day, I think, you know, like what you guys were just discussing.
So Darwin, let's go quickly back to the RV problems that we're having, not just North Lake, but outdrugs everywhere. So by law, people can camp on their own place, but they can only camp there for fourteen days.
Correct.
I wish the recorder wasn't going, but there's nowhere in our ordinance currently that says you cannot camp or any certain. That, that's the problem I ran into the most with our ordinance. So we say.
Our ordinance or the state?
Our, our, and I haven't found anything on the state level.
Well, the state campgrounds, you can only be there for fourteen days.
Yeah, but that's a state campground, it's not your private property that you own. So, so and I asked this specific question to planners as well while I was asking them the fee schedule question. I asked them a question on how everyone is dealing with it. And it's not pleasant how people are dealing with it. Some are issuing temporary use permits to stay living in a camper so long as you're connected to, to services. And the ORS that they references, um ORS um four four six point one five, uh one two five, which is occupancy on private land. Kenny and I went over this and looked it up in the code book and if you were connected to water and sewer and electrical, then you could technically live in a, in a recreational vehicle. Now, unless you prohibit it. And this is, you know, we can be more restrictive, we can be less restrictive, and this is the less restrictive.
I, I, I have no problem people living in their trailer and their RV. My problem is living in their RV without any services.
Without those services, yeah.
And so we need to do something that regulates people from moving two, three, four trailers in, none of them pumped up to water, none of them pumped up to electric or sewer, and they're dumping their sewer everywhere.
Well, the other conundrum is too, so the so there needs to be a cap, so, so, so one complies with water and sewer and yes, instead of four, there's ten, yeah.
So, so how do you.
And so, so nine of them are probably paying the original landlord something to be honest, so they're making money off of it. But between their water source.
So I do have a way from that.
Seven source won't get, you know.
So let me, let me give you the land use on that is that why we've always used no more than seven days out of thirty is because guests of yours can only stay no more than seven out of thirty. And so that's how we get away from more than one camper on property, um because and, and, and in residential zones, you can't have more than one home. You can have a second home only with a, a conditional use permit. One home outright permitted, second home land use process that we gotta go through, notified adjacent and all that. And on exclusive farm use zoning, our, our A one, A two zones, you have to go through a full process, you know, land use process to even, even if you have over one hundred sixty acres. So nothing is outright permitted there, so you'd still have to go through the land use. But in a, this is what, what is, this is, if we go that route and say, hey, you could stay in a camper if you have these things, that's gonna totally change the way we've been doing things because right now, we don't, we don't let people apply or septic or, or power, um or even water in the talus sites without having submitted building permits for a home. And so.
Oh, okay, so.
You wouldn't have building permits for a camper.
Just real quick though, I mean, a camper technically typically has its own sewage system in its container. And so.
And it has to be dumped.
Yeah, then go dump it. But what you can't do, what, I mean, the whole, but, the whole issue with this is health and safety. If the, if you have your enforcement, some of this has to be left to the discretion of the enforcement officer. If he goes out there and they're, they're in their camper, fine, you know, they're on their private property, they're in their camper and they're getting it dumped and everything else, that's fine. But if they got a hole cut out the back and they're dumping into a hole behind it, the enforcement officer is gonna smell it, see it, everything else, and at that point, it's a health and human safety violation.
And, and the bad thing is.
I mean, that's not a septic system, it's not, I mean, that's just more.
But even, even with that, James, they're dumping it in a five gallon can and then dumping it in somebody else's garbage can.
Well, then that's a serious nuisance at that point, but go ahead, you got a lot to say.
So.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's how to, it's how to police, how you gonna police that.
Well, you have to have, they have to have the ability to go onto that property. And again, you're not going, we're not looking to go after every Tom, Dick and Harry that has a camper. We're, we're looking for the egregious violators and the people that are, that are just absolutely blatantly causing serious issues. You don't want this program to become a point where, you know, Uncle Sam's in every single person's business. When my family came out in the seventies, we lived in a teepee the first winter.
Right.
I mean, it, it's, and, and we built a house. We went through the process and, and built a home, all that stuff takes time. And at lumber prices, you know, I can't really begrudge someone not being able to get their house under construction immediately.
Yeah, but what we're getting is, is however many days that that can be on there on your own property, that camper.
Yes.
Versus if we're gonna be here for nine days, we go back two months and we're still there.
You know, how, how, with one camper, is it really the priority of the enforcement officer? I guess that's a question I'm posing.
Right, it becomes, it becomes a given.
Well, if they're dumping their sewage, that's a major problem. If they're not taking their sewage and dumping it because I know our viewers that come and stay for a month to stay with grandma and they're there thirty days out of thirty.
So it just depends.
But they'll go and dump and then they'll come back or something.
So. Which, which we get.
Right.
Totally, which we totally get.
And that's what I'm, I'm wondering if we wanna make sure that there, we leave some discretion for the officer that gets that too, instead of making this too convoluted. I, I'm just, I'm just footballing here.
You know, another thing that I've seen throughout the county is you have RVs on a property and then you have a porta potty.
Yeah, I was doing very good with that too.
And you may have more than one RV and they're all using the porta potty.
So what do you do if a guy that's got twenty RVs and they got holes in the side of them and they're all stuck together, what do you do about that?
Well, technically, I mean, it's, it, you know, whether it's a, a different land use, it's, it's, it becomes an RV park virtually, kinda, I mean, it just, there's a there's a discrepancy now, now like various point, you know, yeah, there's one trailer and, and they don't wanna have to go and dump there.
Yeah.
So they, they have a forty pot, you know, porta potty brought in, you know, so basically that's a holding tank that they've got scheduled with whoever to come help it, you know? Creed. You know, that's being taken away on a weekly or monthly or basis.
They're still living there year round or.
Right, but, but to, but to James's point, you know, yeah, maybe they haven't quite, maybe they're waiting for lumber prices to go down, they don't have any other place to go, but, but, you know, now they're utilizing, they're not having to go dump their trailer every week or whatever. And, uh, you know, there's something that's being, it's being addressed, the waste is being, it's not being dumped out in the desert or thrown on someone else's property or thrown on someone else or piped into a, if you get a hundred gallon drum or fifty gallon drum. Or thrown on someone else's property, or thrown on someone else, or piped into a fifty gallon drum or fifty gallon drum. And and, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
And so. I mean, that.
So.
That means, you know, a lot better alternative.
Yeah.
But but the problem is, you give an H, they take a mile and there's ten, you know, now that port of body can only handle, you know, five per week, you know, and then. You know, but but it's set up for a month for one person, you know, now, now there's, I mean, it's. It's a very tough, it's a very tough deal.
So the ORS, the the four four six point one two five occupancy on private land. It says it needs to be connected to sewer system.
Really?
And so period, I mean, that's that's not a port of body, I mean, if we want.
That's sanitation, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
And that that is law.
And then our current, um, you know, um, ordinance, the one one six.
That's regardless of whether it's an RV or a shed.
Yeah.
The can buy these days, you know, that people are turning into living quarters.
Currently is a nuisance.
Still the same right now.
Currently, it's a nuisance if we if, the keeping of any outdoor port of body except those. Using connection with construction projects approved by like county building official or land use, all port of bodies will be secured in place in the manner. Not to be offensive to your joint landlords and or the public port of bodies, we maintain in sanitary fashion and pump on a regular basis, but. The keeping of them is a nuisance right now. I mean, it's a violation of what we're, unless it's in connection with a construction project. Land use such as maybe, you know, an event or or a campground or something like that.
And then, then I talked with Dave Wills, I think this happened last year, so so any RV. That's tied into a a water and sewer is is subject to paying uh. She what, whatever they uh tax.
Yeah, the hotel lodging tax.
Yes.
Transient lodging tax.
Yes.
Even if it's their homes right on their ground?
Correct.
They have just a lodging tax.
Well, it it they're hooked up the, you'll have to talk with Dave, you know, you set this over, but but it's it's taxable, it's 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 it's.
Cause they're using.
Cause they're using it for.
Cause they're tied into water, sewer, electric.
Yeah. So the the residence, so they're taxing it as, I guess, as a residence. Makes sense, it's it's how that, you know. And then to your question, like the the sheds and stuff, you know. So so those sheds, unless they're brought up to one or two family dwelling code. You know, can't be occupied, they are, why, that's what we're getting. So that one not being on wheels is a building that that is.
Violation.
Violation. Ones on wheels, the state doesn't recognize them. Other than the plumbing, the water, the electric. So. We're responsible for nuisance, we're also responsible for protecting private property rights. And so we kinda gotta walk the line. My thought would be. Can't have a trailer there if you're staying in it without power, water, sewer. For more than fourteen days, just like the, just like the campgrounds. If they're more than fourteen days there, violation, you can only have one trailer, one RV on a property. Unless you get a. Special code or a special permit for that. That would keep. Multi-trailers moving on to a single property.
Some people have one trailer, they're simply. Small one for this and big one for that.
Yeah, it's hard to just limit it to trailers.
They're not living in them, but they're on their property.
They're turning these cargo containers now into the same, yeah, same deal.
So listen, yeah, this has been the biggest, you know, why we started changing our policy where we were issuing. Any permit, address, power, septic without seeing plans in for a home. Was because we were getting a lot of these, you know, really campgrounds established in residential zones. And it was upsetting to all the neighbors that have nice houses in in these areas. And so, you know. That's what, that's why this is a really tough program to to enforce if we're not specific in what our codes say, and becoming more restrictive.
Yeah, cause regardless, I still won't give any of those power unless unless plans are submitted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah.
And they're not hitting up, you know, we've had, we've had a couple of cases now, which has been great, where they wanted to build a shop first. So so they wanted to store, you know, their stuff in, so they needed ten power, and and that's great, you know, still submit. Submit this, submit that, and yeah, let's do it. And yes, your fifth wheel over here, you know, plugged in. And uh, one particular gentleman's doing his house right now, and it's and it's, it's been a year and it's changed.
That's, that's happened a lot. Start living out of their shop.
And people get that tight spot.
But they're working.
Which is fine, yeah. I mean, they go, they're submitting what they need to submit, yeah, they they go through the process.
And and we've had, we have a specific spot in our code that says you can live temporarily in a camper while building, you know, a a single family dwelling. Um, but that's a whole land use process as well. And uh. You know, we haven't, we haven't issued that for manufactured dwellings, because we thought, well, the manufactured dwelling typically is already built and it's gonna just get delivered and set up. Now, it's looking like nine months to a year before it's even built and delivered. So I've I've had an increasing amount of people saying, hey. Can I live out of my camper while I'm waiting for my man- manufactured home to get enough? Now, it's, you know, only the last six months have I started considering that option, because in previous to that, I would never. Issue a temporary use permit, cause I was like, well, by the time you get this temporary use permit issued, here comes a manufactured home right behind it and. You know, whether it's, you know, one or two weeks extra beyond the seven days, I'm not gonna fuss about that. And nobody else would, cause they see both of them, it's coming back. Right. But now, nine to twelve months, yeah, I'm seeing that people are gonna need it, but they're also, that permit's only good for six months, so then they're gonna have to get reissued and. You know, um, that placement permit, you know, and and it's a cost of less than a hundred bucks or something.
So we've had to make our own changes as this last year, everyone has, you know. I have no problem people living in their trailer if they have plans to build.
Sure.
And then there's times where I, to be honest with you, I haven't lived in a RV for eighteen months. And. You know, got the tight spot, but. But we had sewer, water, electric, everything on. And so we we've gotta figure this out, what we're gonna do, I mean. So what about these guys that buy a piece of ground like up north? Wanna go camping, bring their trailer down, and that's their cabin.
It's a home base.
I still think we need to make it so if you don't have a building permit. You can only be be that trailer there fourteen days.
And we need to get specific in our codes, all I'm saying, working with legal counsel to look at all of these provisions. One one of the ones I haven't shared with you, I kinda wanna bring up was um Deshues County. Um, I may have brought this up with a couple of you in the past, but um, the issue, and I'm just gonna read straight from the email. Um, their code matches River County's code, which talks about the um, RS four four six. Living in a camper or an RV is a temporary use under similar provisions. However, the issue we're increasingly experiencing are claims associated with Americans. With Disability Act, ADA, requiring a reasonable accommodation to live into the RV for twelve months or longer, provide there. Is adequate wastewater treatment, among other services, and not in a wetland floodplain, et cetera. The issue. Was highlighted in their local news last weekend, they say. The ADA claims require significant time. According with uh legal counsel, environmental soils, onsite subject stuff, and among other uh. Others to provide reasonable accommodations while addressing any other issues. So. That was brought to our, you know, all the planners' attention, that those that attended the meeting, that Deshues County was experiencing as that there's. Um, some federal provision, you know, with ADA requirements that allow, you know, those that meet ADA requirements to stay. Stay in a camper long term, um, provided that there are, you know, certain, certain connections available in wastewater. So that that's, it it kinda goes back to the other ORS, so it's, you know, it's interesting and I I'm, you know, this is a total change in perspective. You know, parenchym, so to speak, for for implementing this program where, you know, in the past, we were saying, no way could you stay in a camper. Uh, long term, um, other than what we had been using in the EFU zones as a private campground. The R one zone doesn't. Have a private campground provision, um, but we're seeing applications for a private campground, if someone just wanna essentially set up their. Campground for themselves to stay in. But but, you know, the state remind us that a campground by definition is no more. Than thirty days in a six month period, so it still couldn't live on the property as a campground, if it's, you know, a campground for one, so to speak, so.
That's interesting, I didn't know that, cause that.
Yeah. How do you make like thirty days out of six, six months?
And how how do you make, I mean, are you making RVs ADA compliant?
Yeah, yeah, I I don't know, it's crazy.
There are some, yeah.
Well, sure, there are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I I wanna get some more information from Deshues County on how that's working out. Um, and um, the planner that that. Uh, sent me that information about the ORS, um, also said that that they asked that specific question to. Um, D L C D and and D L C D could not tell them, give them a a definitive answer on how this works. For for people living in a camper, so. You know, I, if we wanna go that route, I am completely supportive of it. It's, it is better to see a septic and power and. An address and all this stuff, um, and and, you know, that keeps us in the, you know, health and safety aspects. At least for the land and surrounding neighbors. Now, you know, it's always been discussed that that, you know, a camper is not. For permanent use, it's it's temporary use, but you know, homelessness and and what is defined by homelessness. Is a protected class as well now, other, you know, um, you know, no discrimination stuff, I mean, that might be a reason why we can't. Say people can't live and stay on their own land in a camper too. And that's why ordinance isn't specific, I've sent. You know, dozens of of threatening letters saying you can't stay in a camper on your land, well, usually only when neighbors are complaining. Um, you know, because, you know, they think that there's not sanitary, you know, uh, you know. Activity is actually happening on that, you know, with the person staying on the property, so.
And I think as a county, I mean, you know, we're. You can go home or, I mean, that's what's required, I think.
Yeah.
You you've gotta keep it consistent through the whole.
I I totally agree.
And they have, you know, they, that's another thing, you know, they have a park model. You know, which is on wheels, and and it's a, it's a T twenty big tail plug in. You know, and there, and it's, it's up wheels or anything. So.
I I think you have to have water, sewer, and electric to have a trailer on there. And then.
And they still have.
You know, we've seen multiple places with two, three, four RVs on, you know. We have to do something about that, you know. I mean, if if people have two RVs. I would say they have to have some kind of permit.
Yeah, we gotta, you gotta cover the whole spectrum though, these these cargo containers are out of control.
Right.
You have to say structures.
If things are really super quick.
Yes, yes.
Temporary dwellings.
No temporary dwellings would.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all outright, no temporary dwellings.
Well, for example, that one at Sunlake, when I, I went there.
Did you go there?
Yes. And, you know, at this stage in the framing portion of it, and and the square footage.
Yeah.
I mean, they could easily say, well, we're just building a shed.
So is the square footage under the.
That's just it, I don't, I don't have permission yet, you know.
You can't go on the property, because.
But I'm saying, from my days, we'll look from a square footage. And I think it means that shed, it's small, right? And so. I, yeah, I can't just go, you know, red tag this thing without knowing the whole spectrum of it, other than land use. What, now what is their intention? None of us know.
They've never spoken to me, I didn't know.
The other thing is, is I can look where the power pole is, I'm a transformer, and see a temporary service. That hasn't been permitted or, um, you know, come over our desk. But it, but it's there, you know, no meter, nothing's with that, no utility's not gonna hook up to it, but they have it on a pole. So does that tell me though, they're building this shed first, then they're gonna come in and, and, you know, submit their permits and and build a house or a house? I don't know that. And and so I have to play that to my discretion, that we have to see where it goes now. Or land use, you know, you know, if there's a code enforcement thing, yeah, go in there and they say, have you gone through land use, you know? Your neighbor's seeing you're building something, you know. Talk to them, figure it out. So so before we go on, let's let's get this clear. So are we all. And agree that if you're gonna move an RV or. A container or build a shed on a non-farm dwelling. Of any kind, that it's gotta have power, water, and sewer first. That would stop these guys from pulling these containers in, building little sheds. So you, so let's get it, it starts with land use. So if you word it that way, I would say you start the process of land use. Can you even do it?
And you enforce it?
So, you know.
Well, they do.
What do you mean by do it? Can you enforce it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to build a structure where their tag, but whatever is on the property, you know, it, you'll start a land use. Get the okay, get the okay, and then.
From.
Yes, and then from there, it'll trickle, and then now we all know, we're all on the same page, we all know what that intended intended use is gonna be. And then, yes, you know, um, depending on what it is, you know, ag example, and they don't have, they don't have power just for eighty. Storage, you know, at least that process is going through. Yes, we wanna put a something on there, uh, well, and you have to have power, water, sewer. But we definitely. I would say these guys bring in containers on their place and just scattering them from hell to breakfast. And and.
Using them as a living quarters.
We don't know what they're using them for. Well, there's, that's, so that's a very good point, but that's, so so you you both are right, I mean, one could be used for. For, you know.
For shit.
Or storage. But then, you know, all of a sudden, you always start popping out of the chimney, well. You don't need to heat your storage stuff, so.
There is.
We know there's a family in the North End with kids living in a storage shed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, there's several.
Uh. Yep. Now, there's several, one one place is actually, one place is actually pretty nice where they stack three. You know, so I'm assuming they they pull in their fifth wheel or trailer in between. And. I mean, and it's, I, I, well, I'm not gonna word it, at at least it's. It's in a place, not scattered all over Hell's Half Acre, you know, it it's, someone took some thought in the staff room. But it can't be cut and hide, you know, we put in a store and we're so creepy ones.
So it's become pretty clear, we're gonna have uh nuisance rules and fines. We're gonna have land and use, use different ordinances and fines. We're gonna have building that'll be different. It's not all gonna be the same, we're not just gonna say, oh, that's four four. It'll be different for all three.
Correct.
Because you guys are recommending we stick with the ORS's that you that you talked about. Does that make it impossible for the code enforcement officer to do the job?
I don't think so.
Especially.
So it's just part of the complexity of the job.
Yes.
And how there there, you know, it's not just one set of rules, there's there's gonna be several sets.
But with our our county ordinance, there's no rule on having multiple RVs on the strong. Or living in a container or a shed, you know.
That's part of our problem.
There is the, you know, no more. There is the, you know, no more than seven out of thirty for guests. If you do want more guests to stay for longer than seven days out of the thirty day period, it's a temporary use permit. And, and then I, I would say, you know, if, if we notice something going on and they said, hey, we want them to stay longer, then I'd say, okay, well. Is this gonna be a second dwelling situation or third, fourth, whatever? Is it a campground situation, are you charging these people to stay? Is it just a family, you know, compound kinda situation? Um, the landowners, guests, no more than seven out of thirty, so I'd say, then you're gonna need a temporary use permit, and then. That requires me to notice adjacent owners, agencies, everybody comments, and they still have to have sanitary connections. And so, we'd still be looking at some kind of system, which for a campground is a very expensive system. And, you know, generally, people will want one resident on one property. Occasionally in the R one zones, it's, there is a chance in some other zones for, you know, a second dwelling, um. Accessory dwelling.
They have to apply for that.
Yeah, they'd have to apply for it, yeah, there's no zone where it's outright permitted, um.
And then, and then, when they, if it gets to that point, then it, so D E Q has.
Yeah, there's a, there's a.
There's, there's a, there's a big D E Q portion of that on their, on their, which Darrell was literally on it.
But on that same note, did you Q's been looking at that piece of property out on Green Barrel for how many years, ten, fifteen years?
Nothing. I, I, I believe, I'm, that's, that's why I, 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 yeah, I'm putting this process more, right, than just like at a county level. Um. To be, to be able to enforce.
This process is gonna be pretty fluid, so. You know, we're gonna have to revise and update and change, but, you know, to get everything, you know, yesterday I've seen. On Facebook, somebody was complaining about a broken down garbage truck. Right next door and full of garbage, it's been there for several years. According to ORS.
Yeah.
Any, any immediate needs, any immediate safety hazard can be removed then, right then. By law, we can go in there, clean that, take that out because it was an immediate safety hazard, and. You know, we're gonna have to apply some of those things.
Which that was a great example, that's, that fifteen's over there for that, you know, it's full of garbage.
It's, it's actually kinda like any alleyway.
Yes, and then portion of that is out in the corner now, so, you know, any, anyone could smack that with a car or. Truck or whatever.
Through the alleyway.
And then, you know.
Is it, is it the South County?
Yeah.
Like, we can walk through it.
Yeah, we can walk.
And so, that one needs to be dealt with immediately, and.
And see, the foliage is, you know, it's grown out in those alleyways, you know, and we know, so, like I said, you know, someone, you know, say. The sheriff takes over, it's pretty easy that. That, that's, that's definitely, like, see, access egress, it's, it's a, it's a bad deal.
So, and if the county were to remove that, like you were saying, immediately, the hazard, we remove it, right? Then what, you know, do we basically bill that person the cost?
So, so that's another thing, you gotta, you know, it's in the city, it's in, I, I'm assuming the alleyway is city, city easement.
Yeah.
So. I don't, that's, I don't know how you guys would have.
Just speaking out.
I mean, the city brought that to my attention on the house part, and then when I saw that, that came, that came.
Wait a second, the city brought the house to your attention?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Barry, speak, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, to follow up, is the city asking you to enforce their ordinance? Yeah, so they, so they wanted me to look at the house as a, as, as a possible firelight safety portion of electrical. And, and so, well, at, at courtesy. Would, would look at it.
When time is available.
When time is available.
Yep.
And, so I didn't see the portion there worrying about, what I saw was, that the, a, a whole different issue. And when I went around to the alley, that's why I would take you, then I brought it to their attention, that. However, that is gonna be addressed through their enforcement or whatever, I just don't know what that is. But I guarantee you, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's definitely unsafe.
You can say it's, because it's unsafe, because it actually, like you already pointed out, it could be unsafe for our police officers and everything else, which is. It's only the county officers that are, that are administering law enforcement right now. We could, we could formally, you know, just write a letter to the, or call up the town and say, hey, are you guys going to address the fact that this thing is in your easement in this alleyway? And if they're not able to, or they just say they can't, they can't do it, then we do it.
You're absolutely right.
And then we just, that was, that was why we billed the cost of the disposal of that, because it is an immediate hazard. Whether it's on town or not, we do them the courtesy of letting them know, but if they can't take care of it, or they don't have a, a mechanism for it, then we do.
Right, which I, I think this is a great one to start with, when, when this important thing comes into play. That'd be a great one to get, I'm just wondering if we should wait that long, but. We have, it's, I, I think it's really well cut. But you're right, now that we said it.
Yeah, we know, we know about it.
We know it here tomorrow.
Yeah, so. But we've said it, so maybe someone will do something about it too.
True, it's true. But that is a very, that's a good one to get, you know, enforcement persons be wet and, and run with it. It's, it's a no, they only, they, they, then you have to go on the property, you know, like, stay in the alleyway, take their pictures, you know, tape their measurements. You know, bop their eyes, cross their t's, show where the foliage is, how it covers it up, you know, how, even unless you're there to see it. Um, you know, take a picture of the backyard and all, you know, everything. I mean, it's, it's, mirrors are everywhere, it is, it is out, I don't know what the inside.
So, I believe I briefed before, but you know, we probably should cover it again, because I think a lot of public wants to know what's going on. A few weeks ago, I briefed the town council about the code enforcement officer position. They offered to him like the thirty-four percent of the cost. And the thirty-four percent derived from a population base here in Lake County. Thirty-four percent of the population in Lake County lives right here in town Lakeview. Town council was receptive to that, it was equivalent to, I believe, twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars per year. Let them know about five percent increase per year, you know, with COLA and different things. That the county would provide, uh, an office, a vehicle, anything like that, we were just asking for support, uh, for, for salary. Support the physician. And I was told that they would get back. Uh, they wanted to know about how much, how often, uh, the physician would be working on Lakeview. Uh, code enforcement issues versus the county. And I said that that would be for future discussion, you know, we have to figure that out, so. At this point, I have not heard back, uh, or heard that the town has made a decision on that, and that's reading the paper. Hopefully we'll hear back from them. Whether we'll have the town support.
Well, you know, I, I think, you know, to answer that other question, I think it's thirty-four percent, and you know, you try to vote, make sure it's a percentage of time, you know, I think that would be fair.
Either four things out of ten, or ten, ten issues.
Yeah. And, and, and the same goes for any competition. You know, if they can't make thirty-four, then they go on twenty, then it's one percent of time. So, I don't know.
But we shall see where they stand.
Appreciate you, your work on that.
Anything else we need to discuss on this?
Do you guys have any changes on this, on the nuisance orders, are the ordinance? For tomorrow, just the nuisance ordinance, not this future ordinance.
Sure. Oh. Does.
That's the code enforcement handbook.
Okay.
So there's another document for ordinance one sixteen for nuisance.
I think one of the main things.
That, you guys want me to do it for tomorrow?
This one?
Yeah. Don't you guys think of anything?
What's, what's the history of this too, of the, you?
So, they just revised it not long before I came on, and it was pretty contentious, they had. Misinformation, they sent out a blank letter to everyone, and so I think we really need to be tactful moving forward, like. If we send out an inform, a look, informative letter, we need it very clear, it's just an informative letter, it's not a personal letter to the homeowner, the property owner. Um. So like, they've taken different approaches, this is kind of a, I think what they call a soft approach. Um. And from my understanding, it's not been successful, I feel like. Jennifer's sent a lot of letters out, and she doesn't get a lot of response, because it doesn't have any teeth. So this new ordinance with the citation skip, citation included, and like, being taken out of the commissioner's hands might be more effective. And then, like Mark said, there's probably gonna be some tweaks needed and more hearings needed when we get this person online and it's really going. Right now, he just wants to get it kinda set up to where this person can come and start training, and we can start doing some things. Um, without doing the whole ordinance hearing process for this. In the code enforcement handbook, that we can just adopt tomorrow, um, and then adopt, that adopts the IC, the B, or however that goes.
International code.
Yeah.
The IPMC.
Just to kinda get those building blocks in place for when we, hopefully we can fly this job soon, and they won't have to start from scratch.
You have. So you, you inserted, um, I was trying to wait, under nuisance define, did you insert?